Good morning and welcome to the regular session of Board Supervisors meeting for March twenty-fifth. Mr. Jameson, roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Kurten Bach?
Here.
Layla?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Please, uh, please join for a moment of silence and reflect on today's actions. Please join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a, uh, item number one is agenda received, as proposed or amended. I do know there was a request to table item seven. Move to remove item seven.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Public comments, this is time for those who wish to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda. Buddy in the room or online. Seeing none, we'll go to claims of payments as a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized directly issued, directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as allowed. So, second. Motion and second, please.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is nine hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars and fifty-one cents. And of that, the Sheriff's sixty-fourty fund, we are paying three thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. We are paying very large payment on courthouse and VA and health department renovations today. That totals about four hundred and sixty-five thousand. And let's see, we also are paying for the first half of the board's scanning maintenance of sixteen thousand, six twenty-five fifty. That's not a huge amount, but I thought you might be interested to know that. I'm excited to see that project moving ahead. And I think that's all the larger items today.
That's a little higher than sixty-fourty than normal, is it?
Yeah, there's, um, Mid-American, there's like two bills, we've got two bills in there from the American and a couple of bills from Menards for supplies. So, nothing too unusual, hopefully.
This, this also includes twenty-nine thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars in costs for that mailing that is most inappropriate or unreliable for our tax base to folks. I mean, it's a mandated thing that we don't get reimbursed for as well. And it's very confusing and misleading that we're expecting to send out to patients.
Twenty-nine thousand dollars for that?
Twenty-nine thousand dollars for that mailing.
I'll just keep.
That's just direct costs. That wasn't time that our employees were spending putting it together as well. All right, we've got a motion and a, uh, second on the resolution. Uh, roll call, uh, for claims of payments, please. Brandt?
Yes.
Kurten Bach?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nichols, engineer. We've been telling you about the road maintenance staff has been working on the gravel roads in the past few weeks, pulling our shoulders in. I hear you've gotten probably getting emails on that. Uh, when that happens, there is, it can be pretty messy for a few weeks. There's oftentimes a windrow along the side of the road as the, uh, the blade operator is trying to, uh, strike off that, the edge of the road so there's not a, a grass shoulder so that the water will flow off of the gravel roads. In doing so, they're pulling grass and rock, creating a windrow. The windrow sits there for a few days, a week, and then they come back and move that to the other side, et cetera. Uh, we have gotten several complaints. Uh, this is very normal procedure. Most counties do this every spring. So I just wanted to keep you informed of that and let you know that, uh, that is still going on for several weeks. I also wanted to bring your attention to a matter that, uh, I sent you an email about yesterday. And that is, uh, one of the unintended consequences of House File seven eighteen, uh, last year was that there would be less tax money available overall to a county perhaps. And if that is the case, counties may not be able to continue to fund the, the local effort as required by the state of Iowa, required by Iowa code for the roads. Uh, as you know, if a county does not provide at least seventy-five percent of the required local effort, they cannot use their farm-to-market funds. So, and that is regular state gas tax funding that comes to the counties, the cities in the counties. Uh, one of the proposed solutions to this, as proposed by the Iowa County Engineers Association, is to develop a road levy. And that would be used to fund roads at the local level, contributing to the local effort. The County Engineers Association have proposed that to, uh, member of the, the ranking member of the House, Representative Kaufman, last week. And he urged us to contact all members of the House of Ways and Means Committee. Uh, we are, the County Engineers Association, we are doing that. I just wanted to keep you informed of this. And I will continue to keep you informed about what this means for, for our local roads. Can I answer any questions on that?
Have you heard back from any of our local folks?
No, I'm just in the process of starting to contact them due to my, uh, absence last week. So, just starting on that. I will keep you informed though.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Karen Shaw-Walter, County Auditor. I am here to answer any questions you might have. And a follow-up on the email that I sent, uh, yesterday regarding Senate File seventy-five, um, which all of you, um, have probably been aware, but, um, would require any county that has a Regents University, so Blackhawk, Johnson, and Story County to move from a Plan One to a Plan Three, uh, board. Uh, right now, Plan One means that we have five members and you're all elected at large. Uh, Plan Three would, uh, move you all into individual districts. That you would represent your district and only voters of your district, uh, would be able to vote. So, um, this bill has been, uh, introduced the last three legislative sessions. I always said it's gonna be a matter of when, not if. So, we, I'm here today because this bill is on the governor's desk. So, I probably have more questions than answers at this point, but just want to keep you guys, um, abreast of the situation and what it means. The biggest thing, uh, moving forward is that this, um, bill would require us or would require you guys to create a redistricting commission. Uh, and so that's probably the first step. Uh, this bill goes into effect upon enactment. Uh, so the timeline is pretty fast-moving that we would have to, um, draw this, or have you guys appoint that redistricting commission by May fifteenth. So I just want to make sure that you guys are aware and make sure that we're not missing, uh, any steps in this process. Questions? I'm sure you won't have lots of questions.
Yeah, uh, Michelle, how much did that cost for the last election? Or should we be looking at past numbers for, to plan for that in twenty-six?
Karen probably can speak to that better than I can.
Yeah, so, um, if you're talking about the special election, that, cause that is something else regarding this bill that in the past, if you've had a vacancy, uh, for supervisor, uh, we had the option to be able to appoint or call for a special in, um, January to elect supervisor Kurten Bach. We did have a special election and it was about fifty thousand dollars to do that special election. Now that also was countywide. Moving forward, it would just be by district, so it'd be a little bit smaller. And as far.
This would take offense in the next general election, correct?
Yes, so, um, the, the redistricting commission would be, would convene or have been established by May fifteenth. And then they would have, that commission would have until October first, uh, to create these districts and get it sent over to the state. And then, yes, it would go into effect January first, twenty-twenty-six. So, um, that is still a little bit unclear on what those races would look like. But just based on redistricting that just happened here in twenty-twenty, um, and just having been in the office, my guess is that all five of you would be back on the ballot in twenty-twenty-six with safer terms. But that, that detail is still to come. That's not explicit in the bill.
Yeah, the bill didn't lay it out and I think that's unconstitutional. The constituents just elected me to a four-year term. Uh, they just elected Justin to a four-year term. We're gonna serve those four years.
Some of them seem to be gone now.
I did, uh, reach out to the Secretary of State's office yesterday morning requesting that they provide some guidance to us three counties at this stage of fact. That is what I know at this point, but obviously something to keep on the radar. And like I said, the timeline is pretty fast-moving.
So that commission needs to be established by May fifteenth?
Yes.
And then was there deadline for the work to be completed?
October first.
Oh, okay.
And then so as a board, you guys get to choose whether you want three, five, or seven members. Um, and then it will be the duty of you guys to appoint those members. And how that works, let's just say you want three members. The majority party of the board gets to pick two and the minority party of the board picks one.
I know Linda, you're, I think, our, our point person with Urban County Coalition. Have they reached out at all or, or maybe we need to schedule a work session and invite them? Um, if there's been any discussions to oppose, um, and to challenge the bill if it is in fact signed?
Certainly, I'll reach out to them, uh, right away by email and we'd be talking to them on Friday if they don't have a response for us before then. So, yep, so happy to do that and see where we go from there. Thank you, Karen. I was gonna say too, appreciate any information you can provide us and guidance, I guess, as we have this aggressive timeline to appoint people and individuals. I guess when you're asking individuals to serve in that capacity, they need to know what's, what to expect for themselves either. So anything we could have to share.
Absolutely, that's, um, the biggest thing that I'm looking at from the state at this point, um, is that guidance for this commission and what their responsibilities are.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I was at the Capitol last Wednesday, asking some legislators about it. And it's funny, they voted this thing through, but have no clue in details of how it's supposed to go.
That's kind of the case on a lot of stuff.
Yep. Yeah, that's pretty typical, yeah.
All right, any other department heads either in the room or online? Or elected officials? Seeing none, we'll move to the, uh, minutes approval for the March eighteenth meeting. So moved?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign, motion carries. Item six, consent agenda. The items listed will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate, uh, discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item, uh, be considered separately. So moved?
Second.
The roll call, uh, Mr. Jameson, please. Kurten Bach?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Item eight, as number seven was tabled. Uh, item eight is a, uh, eight-eight, a motion to authorize the Waterloo, uh, Water Works to make necessary repairs to the outside water shut-off at seven-three-zero-four, LaPorte Road, Washburn, in an amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars and assessed to be repaired to the property taxes if necessary. So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second, do we have any additional discussion? Can we have Michelle give us kind of an overview for this? So, I don't know if everybody knows, I've been asked a few questions on this and I think everybody's all for it. But in the.
I will, I'll try, I might have to ask questions. Um, so as you know, Waterloo is a rural water system. There's no city that operates it. So that means it's actually the county's water system. And this, in this case, there is a repair that needs to be made to the, I believe it's the water shut-off outside the home. The Water Works has an official process for how they contact the property owner and they've done that with no response. So their process after that is to go ahead and make the repairs and they build the homeowner. However, because we are the owner of the water system, they are not able to assess to the property taxes. Our board has to take that action. So that is why we are asking. And we also, the Washburn Water System has to pay for those repairs as well until the homeowner reimburses for them. So that is why we are asking for your authorization to go ahead and repair it and then assess the property in the event that the homeowner does not pay. And anything else that?
All right, this is a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Eight-B, a motion to approve, uh, publicizing the vacancy of the Board of Adjustment with requirement that candidates reside outside of any city limits, but within Blackhawk County. So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign, motion carries. Item eight-C, discussion possible board action to commit funds to City of Waterloo for a joint evidence processing and storage facility.
I'll just point out quick on B, just for the public, they know that the outside of city limits, that's part of the state code.
Lee?
Good morning, Board, Sheriff Neff. If you could bring up something that was originally kind of proposed back in twenty-twenty. Um, just give you a quick little overview, especially for three-fourth or three-fifths of you that weren't here. And maybe a few kind of came in at some point in the middle on this, but, uh, and this was actually Captain Herbst's project, who's now retired. So forgive me if I don't have quite all the details going back now, but I would be a quick overview and kind of bring you to how we got to where we are today. So back in twenty-twenty, Captain Herbst proposed a new evidence building, processing and storage out at our range facility. When we started off, it was something we knew we definitely needed, but honestly, it was probably even more of a want, at least when we went into it. As we got into that project, um, we had been talking with, uh, well, Baker Tilly at the time and with, uh, I cap, our insurance company, everybody else on that. Um, as they were looking at our current building, um, facilities there, um, they found that there was actually, well, this was more than just a want. It was actually a need because our current facilities, there's, uh, no running water there. So obviously not just for restrooms, hand washing and that kind of stuff, but if anyone gets contaminated or anything, there's no way to wash their hands, no way to use eye wash. In addition to that, there's no ventilation for the chemicals that they're using, anything like that. Uh, there's no heat, there's no air conditioning, um, just, I mean, it's a cold storage building. It shouldn't be used to actually process things or not use chemicals. So that actually got to point where I cap put out a, yeah, excuse me. They, uh, wanted to recommend that we make, make upgrades, that we needed to have upgrades made. So I think, uh, we ended up at about one point five million dollars was the cost for the, to build the building that we wanted to build out at our range. Unfortunately, the, the funding on that never materialized, um, so that obviously didn't happen. And since then, those, those recommendations that, uh, I cap wanted us to make, um, we still haven't been able to make. So for a lot of our processing, that kind of stuff, we either have to wait, um, until we can get something taken to Marion, Ankeny, Cool County, to do any kind of processing on vehicles, anything that's gonna use chemicals. Um, so it's inefficient, um, especially on a car. We have to wrap it up, basically, enclose the crime scene, get it on a flatbed, pay to have it taken wherever we're taking it, unwrap it, process it. I mean, it's just, it's not an efficient use. It's certainly not best practices as far as any kind of investigation we go. So we're not able to do that. And again, the biggest part though is just the officer's safety. We don't have the heat, the ventilation, that kind of stuff. Um, I know this project has kind of come up a time or two over the last couple of years. Again, it's kind of resurfaced, it kind of got away. Pastor President Stroppad kind of put it back on his plate, but then obviously he ended up moving on. So right now, we're kind of, we've been at a standstill. Fortunately, the City of Waterloo is, um, looking to build one of their own as well. Gives us a great opportunity to partner with them. See that one and a half million dollar building we were looking at four years ago? Uh, if I were standing for you today, asking for that same building, it's probably gonna be two-plus million dollars. Otherwise, for one and a half million dollars, we're gonna be scaling ours way down. This partnership, if we were going on it, it really kind of allows us to do the impossible. For that same one and a half million dollars, it lets us use a bigger, better building. There's a lot of taking the same money and get something even bigger and better and more efficient is just about unheard of, but we've got that opportunity with this partnership. They've got, uh, and we'll get Chief Duncan up here, I think Mayor Hertz here too, to speak to it if, uh, need be. But they've got architect designs getting underway on it, um, for their own building. So it's obviously gonna, it's a collaboration. We'll make it bigger than what they need, bigger than what we need, so we can partner with that. Our building wasn't gonna have any staffing at it. We don't need our own staffing at it. They're a little bigger operation, they're gonna have staffing there. And we're gonna see some benefits from that. They've got a lot of expertise, um, that we don't have, that we're gonna get a lot of benefits from that too. Um, I know I'm talking to Chief Duncan, they're hoping to be around the three million dollar price tag on it. So if we can go in fifty-fifty on that, um, even though we may not fully utilize it, send the building, we're certainly gonna reap a lot more benefit from sharing that with them, the efficiencies, the staffing, the expertise that they've got. So almost kind of paying it forward on that. I'd bring Chief Duncan up here to talk, but just I kind of like to throw in too that my thirty-plus years at the Sheriff's Office, I think our line staff and our supervisory staff have always gotten along well. Sometimes the guys at the top have had some bigger personalities, some bigger egos and stuff. And I think in the past, maybe we wouldn't even have seen this collaboration go. But, um, I know with Dunk here, there's no egos involved. It's not about whose department is bigger, better, or bad or anything like that. Uh, we're both vision something here that's gonna get us, something that's great for both of our agencies, for our staff, but really for the community in general. It's gonna be a huge benefit if we can partner with the city on this, so. Chief Howard, would you come on?
Good morning, Board. Rob Duncan, I'm Chief of Police for Waterloo. Uh, yeah, what, uh, Sheriff Neff talked about there, uh, we've known each other for thirty years. Uh, we actually used to play basketball together, not very good, but, um, uh, if this.
Speak for yourself?
Yeah, well. Uh, yeah, this, this is, uh, something that I think is gonna be a, a great collaboration to put together with us and them. You know, nothing happens in a vacuum in Blackhawk County. If something major happens out in the county, they're gonna ask for our help. Likewise, within the city, we're gonna ask for their help. And we do that already. Uh, but this is definitely something that we are, we're moving forward with. We've identified seven acres right off of MLK. It would be to the west of Northeast Drive out there on MLK. We, the, um, our city council just approved the contract with the architect to move forward with this. Uh, so we're coming to you now to say, hey, uh, we're ready to go here. We really wanna partner with the Sheriff's Department. But we, we need a commitment to at least move forward, to sit down and draw this thing up so we can get a good for, a really good space for both agencies. You guys have any questions for me at all?
Yeah, I know that when reservations were raised in the past, this is because we wanted them to pursue this kind of, uh, joint arrangement and there was kind of pushback, uh, that we were getting as supervisors on saying that it wasn't possible. So I'm just glad that these conversations have now finally, uh, happened, cause it's, it is what makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, with Nate, uh, you know, we get a very good relationship. In fact, uh, three captains are here from the PD as well. Uh, they're pretty excited about this project as well. Captain McColl and Captain Ficker are kind of our, I would call them the gold champions of this. Those would be the ones that are, uh, kind of pushing through with the architects, um, to get how things need to be for our agency and then working with, uh, his staff as well.
Will this building be exclusively evidence intake and, and staffing? But, uh, will it just be evidence intake or will it be additional activities in this space?
This building will just be the lab processing and evidence storage.
Okay.
And intake. Uh, the seven-acre land gives us opportunity to possibly put, uh, another building on it as well that, uh, would be completely separate.
Okay.
But the three million estimate is just on this building?
Yes.
I know when we looked at it before, part of, Nate, part of what I remember from the conversation was that not just us in, in Waterloo, but maybe Cedar Falls, some other communities would be able to utilize.
I mean, our.
When we were the, when we were sort of running point, is that, is that?
There's no doubt this smaller community utilized it. Anytime there's a major investigation and Duncan Laporte hasn't sent any of those, we essentially take it over as the Sheriff's Office. If it's not something that rises, it's a level of DCI. So any of their property, any of their evidence, that kind of stuff, we're gonna process there.
Presumably Cedar Falls.
Cedar Falls, obviously they've got some more of their own capabilities. I'm not sure what they have as far as actual processing type stuff. But I know, you go through the stuff that I sent you here a few years ago, um, there's a lot of support from Cedar Falls, even from, uh, Chief Ray at the time, he's Building Safety Director now. He'd said at that time that they would utilize it and it would be a benefit to them. I think there was a lot of, all the other chiefs are actually still saying with Chief Duncan and Evans, all the others. So we know it's gonna benefit every city in, in the county.
Have there been any discussions with Cedar Falls about going in on the dollar side as well?
Yeah, I did. I reached out to Chief Howard and they're like, this can be great for you guys. We're good, but we'd like to use the garage, uh, that we wanna build, uh, whenever they gotta do a process of the vehicle.
And they were going on the ventilation and all that side, uh, with their facility, is that, if you, all that?
I think they're, like Duncan said, I think they're gonna use it somewhat if they have to process something, but with their own people, but they won't use the storage, they'll use much else for it, so.
They have no, no interest in helping fund it, on that side.
Yeah.
Michelle, um, we take this on, this would be bond-eligible?
Yeah, you'd believe it would, like, you need to do some homework, obviously that would, that's not included in the stuff that we're working on right now, that would be a future issue.
Right.
I think that's some of the questions I have as far as timeline, um, even for working together, let alone timeline for the project. I guess what's proposed for that?
Well, I can speak to that. So, uh, the agreement with the architect has been signed. This, this company, uh, is called Align, it's, they're local, but they have a partnership with, uh, a company out of, uh, Wisconsin. And they've done a lot in municipality buildings. We sat down with them, what was it, about two months ago? Something like that. And, uh, a Zoom meeting with, uh, a couple of architects from that company in Wisconsin. And they're like, oh, this won't take much at all. They've done multiple of these types of projects. So I think, uh, the drawing phase of it, uh, would probably just be a couple of months and then we'd send it out to bids after that. We're looking to hopefully get into it by this time next year.
Up to actually get in the building at this time next year?
Yep.
Well, I know there were a lot of details that we probably didn't discuss in Nate's review, but I said this first came on our agenda as far as the consideration was when the ARPA dollars, um, became available to us. And, um, at that time, I think it was unproposed by the sheriff to be a public health sector project. And when we found out that we couldn't use public health sector as one of the categories for this, that's really kind of where we got into some differences of opinion, I think, for this project going forward because it was going to the lost revenue portion, which meant it was in competition with all of our projects. And it was just for that special category of ten million dollars. And as we had more projects on the Pinecrest side and as we turned out to have treasurers and recorders and different projects that we were able to capture, there were very limited dollars. Um, and so this became not one of the priorities of our, um, that made the list. And as we look now, even at that loss revenue category, we're using overages, um, to get some of our projects completed. So it wasn't that we didn't think that the qual, the project was probably needed or necessary, but, um, I think we thought there were details we needed to look at as well as how much usage is the county, um, using now for these types of projects? How many times would we need it? How many times have we needed it in the past? And I know, um, Nate, you referred to the part of the current facility didn't meet the qualifications and that was exactly right. Uh, the people that actually went in to inspect it said because of the services, we didn't have there like running water and the safety issues that we needed to stop using it, which you said, I think, um, to me that you, that we did immediately because of, of the safety. So it's just, it's not this, to me, just coming today to be really the first time that this has been brought to the board doesn't seem, I guess, like, uh, the ideal time to say, yes, we're buying into this and for one and a half million. I know the project started at seven hundred and fifty thousand and, um, I know it did escalate to the one, two, or one point five million, um, over the time that we were looking at it then. But, uh, we had the land and different things available and everyone was very supportive of us going forward with that. I love the fact that we're looking at a joint venture and cooperating and partnering, but it just seems like there are still a lot of details to work out. And even the, even the discussions as far as partnering with this, what that means for us, what that means for the taxpayers, what's that mean for all the other communities involved? The easiest thing to do is write a letter of support. I know, I see, we always have letters of support for that and there is a need for it. I'm not questioning that. It's to, at what cost? Uh, does the county participate and, and what services do we want to see used there too? Just some of those questions, I think, that we're just so early in the process at this time.
I guess I'm not following, you said, and we need more detail, I guess, what details are we, are you needing?
I'm sorry?
You said, you said we need more details. I guess I'm, I know we don't have the lines. I guess I'm, I know we don't have designs on the building yet, but we know roughly what it's going to look like from, it's going to be similar to what we proposed, just on a larger scale, more space in it. I guess, what, what do you need for more details? What areas do you need covered?
I just think even as we look at any projects that we do ourselves, all the details that's provided to us as a board before we go forward, I would say similar, if not more, when we're sharing it. I don't, I don't know that we were sharing ownership or however we were going to arrange that. But just the details of going forward with the project. When you're talking about especially one point five million dollars, if you were talking about us just using it or, or sharing it and doing a pay for services as we needed it type of thing or something, that would be a different type of arrangement. But that's really all I'm asking Nate at this time. Where are the details for the project? And, and like you said, even the plans that are going to be talked about with the architect, I'm assuming that the only portion then it sounds like we'd be participating in is the cost?
Well, the cost, obviously, we're going to be storing our evidence out there. We're going to be processing anything that needs processed out there. We're going to be using it, I mean, just as they are. It's exactly what we proposed, everything that we wanted to do three years ago. We're just now doing it in a shared building.
Yeah.
Would it be possible, would it be possible, if we were to move forward either today or at a future meeting, Nate, for it to have Nate or someone from, from the sheriff's office in on those architect meetings? So that, to Linda's point, if we're putting up half the money.
Oh, yeah.
For us to make sure, right, that we, that we're, that we're in that process from, from soup to nuts.
Absolutely.
This is kind of why we're here. We need to get to that point where either we're going to have their, in the discussion with their architects or not. And we want them there, I know Nate wants to be there.
Absolutely.
So we, we need to know, okay, are we going to be partnering here? If not, it'll be scaled down, it'll be cheaper. But we've already committed, the lands probably about, what'd they say? Probably about five hundred thousand, that, that's seven acres worth of, and then architects, over two hundred thousand that we've committed to, so.
Yeah, so we're, we're not going to, it's looking to be a silent partner. If we're going to partner with it, then yeah, we're, I'm going to be involved, my staff's going to be involved with the planning of it. And then we're going to be, it's going to be a joint effort from start to finish.
If you guys started a twenty eighty agreement, then how this is going to work with operations of both?
We have to have approval that it's going to go forward before we can start the twenty eighty agreement.
So the, the five hundred thousand for the, that you just referenced, and the two hundred thousand, is that outside of the three million cost?
Uh, yes, yeah. Well, I, I think the architect probably would fall into that three million with the land.
With the land purchase of Sucker.
That's, that's going to push it to three and a half or so. These, these are really, really rough estimates. I mean, I, I build a few houses in the day, but I've never built something like this. So this is some help from the architect on how much it's going to cost. And Mike, Mike, would you advise against me asking any questions or is that getting too dicey?
In my opinion, in fact, if you were to do this department, it kind of matters you have financial interest in this. And I advise is that you recuse yourself from the discussions.
Mike, I'm sorry, I can't hear any of your comments.
Sorry about that. What I advise was that, that Supervisor Brandt recuse himself from the discussions and from participation voting on this issue due to the fact that, or due to his current employment with Waterloo Police.
Thank you.
So Linda, you, you said that you've got questions in, in looking for, in looking for, for details. I, I think it might be helpful if, if we provide, you know, some insight as to which details can help us get to a, to a yes or a no. I think, to your point, normally with a million dollar plus ask, we have a, a little bit of time to consider. I know that this has been a long term, since I've been on the board, we've, there's been some level of discussions, sort of peaks and valleys there. But I also recognize we've got two folks that haven't been a part of these conversations. Would it be possible, Linda, for you to get any questions over to Nate this week?
Not this week, but maybe in the next week or so. Yeah, I was going to say, I don't intend to do that while I'm out of town, I hope, but yeah. And, and, and I just thought, yeah, there are a list of questions, I think. I don't think this was put into Nate's budget or his five-year plan. So the funding for that is certainly not in this year if we're talking about a project to be completed yet this year. So they're, they're just different issues like that. I guess I'd like to know that we, there's been discussion and some resolve to them, at least of how we go about it or what we're going to move forward with. You said some, Rich, I think it was you that mentioned the twenty eighty. And yeah, until you know the project goes forward, you don't. But you have an idea what's going to be the terms of that twenty eighty. You certainly don't go into something blind and find out you disagree later. So there's, to me, a lot of details, but I, I'd be happy to put together a list and see if we can at least come to some agreement and with the board's agreement as well, understanding that the, there are several board members, not just questions that I might have, but they don't all have to be answered if you don't feel they're appropriate. But I do think that we, this is, while it has been a discussion over the years off and on again, and I think Nate mentioned last week that, you know, Dan Tralca had mentioned Waterloo would be coming to us with something. I didn't expect it to be kind of like a finalized project. I expected to talk about the details at that time and then go forward. But, so this was rather surprising, I guess, just to have it on today's agenda and expect some kind of discussion with action as far as I was concerned.
Yeah, Mayor Hart's going to come up while, while he's doing it. You know, I'd, I'd like for us to, you know, next two weeks, three weeks, have a work session and have those questions sent over so that that work session can frankly come with a vote. Because I think it's too easy for this board historically to say we've got questions and never get to answers. We, we've got to get.
Well, and I think, I agree. I think it's very important too that everybody hears it, not just, you know, me sending an email and expecting answers, that we all have it, discuss it.
For sure. I think, I think if we can all send those questions ahead of time to make sure that that work session is as productive as possible versus waiting for two weeks, three weeks, having a work session in which they catch a bunch of questions and then they have to get us answers a week or two or three weeks after that, that starts to just prolong the process unnecessarily. I think we can, we can all individually communicate with Nate, express our concerns or our thoughts. And then Nate and, and so you Waterloo can come with, with answers to whatever questions we've got for the details that are necessary.
I know that my main question was, is going to be, because I, I'm supportive, I do want to see us move forward, but I want to, I don't want to use reserves for this because it is, because of all the limitations being put on the levy right now. If there's something that is bond eligible, that's sizable like this, I think we need to bond for it. So just knowing kind of the timing of when the financing would have to happen for the project and how we can fit that into our bond plan. That we've been developing a bond plan for, for the next five, seven, ten years. We want to incorporate it in that.
And I do apologize for trying to throw that on you, but this kind of came up pretty rapidly from the city side, so.
Mayor Hart?
All right, good morning, everyone. Quentin Hart, Mayor of Waterloo. And I just want to say thank you for hearing, hearing today. I'm here just in support, you know, these folks are the experts, they do this every day. But just from a perspective, if there's an opportunity for us to be able to partner more, that, that helps both the county and the cities as well. Any questions you have, we're, we're here to answer those questions. So please get that to us. As you can see, we have to move forward as well and it'd be great to move forward together. I know former Supervisor Tralca had talked about it, it's been in the works for years, but we're in a situation where we, we have to move forward. And so that's why you see the, the dollar spent to be able to go out for some type of facility development. As soon as we can get the green light from all of you, of course, you'll be engaged in conversation and anything we can do to support your efforts and to regionalize, we're all on board. So look forward to hearing the questions and seeing if we can partner together on this, so thank you.
Is, is your intention to bond where your portion?
I, you know, I don't know yet. We're, we'll, we, we have no choice. I mean, just like you got the word that your facility is in, in a challenging state right now, we are too, especially with our move happening. And we're bursting at the seams already. So I don't know, we'll take a look at a couple of different scenarios to see how we would end up funding it.
So I, we just, I'm wondering if, you know, sometimes, you know, the county carries a bond for another entity that they pay us. I wonder if there, is the possibility that there would be cut, possibly just one bond? Like, did the city hold the bond and we make payments to them? I don't know if those are possibilities or not.
Do you some more on that typically? When that's done, it's another entity that's using our day capacity, so it's a different type of bond issue. We want to consult with our bond council.
I, I think once we get to plan to actually see what this is potentially going to be, that will probably clear up even more. But in the meantime, I, I, I don't know yet. I know the chief has been working with the finance department to come up with some different scenarios on our ability to be able to do it. We're, we're here, we're in support, we'd love to partner on this project, being one of many for the future, so thank you.
Nate, and when we're looking at situations we have today, is there a lot of extra costs when we have to send stuff out? I can, I can only imagine there's.
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously, especially if it's the car that we have to put the wrap up, take down, I mean, tow it down in the back is several thousand dollars. Plus just the inefficiencies of it. We've had things such as safes or other things that need process that wait weeks, if not months. And I mean, our citizens deserve better than that than to wait months for something that if we had a building here to do it, could be done, you know, that week.
Does that also include extra time then for processing cases? Because now you're talking like you're, I can't imagine having to ask someone else to work something else in for you.
Yeah, I mean, anytime you have to wait till there's an opening at another facility to do it, take it there, do it there, bring it back. Just the prep work for getting something prepared to go elsewhere and then to bring it back in addition to the work itself being done out of town. So there's extra cost, there's extra man hours, there's.
Is there safety issues involved with this as well? When we have folks having to handle this stuff without it being properly?
There, there's safety issues in our current setting, where we're able to take it, makes it to a safe setting. I'm sure there's things that they're doing when they're wrapping a car in cellophane and, or whatever. There's probably things that are not the safest involved in that process, as well as again, just certainly not best practice for how to do it. You know, there's, and when you're talking, especially a crime, whether it be a sex assault, a homicide, anything like that that happens in that, I mean, the smallest piece of evidence could easily be lost when you're transporting something like that. You've got every hair, every piece of DNA or whatever wrapped up, but by the time something drives to Des Moines and back, you may not.
I think overall, I'm favorable to the idea, but I'm very concerned on the financial impact. We've been hammered, Justin and I were in the meeting with Michelle, trying to figure out what our debt load is going to be for the next several years, keeping that as low. I want to know what that impact's going to be.
I understand it's a lot of money, but yeah, I understand it's a lot of money, but again, like I mentioned Charlie, it's maybe all things that for a reason because that same amount of money I was asking for three years ago or that Tony was, that gets us in a bigger and better building with a lot more valuable resources than it now than what we're going to have three years ago, so.
Yeah, and, and I just, this is a question, obviously, I'd be asking the board as we consider things. When I just do a rough look at what kind of building projects we have out there, it's very easy to come up with about ten that we look at from a county standpoint. Everything from overages at Pinecrest or the treasurer's office. But, you know, we talk about relocating or doing something different with the attorney's office. We know Kathy's got an eight to ten million dollar project out there as well. We've talked about conservation, even piggybacking on that. We have now the evidence intake, we've talked about dispatch, we've talked about, you know, the shuffle of IT and BOS. So there's a lot of planning that we haven't done for which projects we feel rise to, I guess, a priority or what we're going to do or plan for. So this just becomes another one again on the list, Nate. It's Nate, not that your project isn't important, but kind of prioritizing what we have to take care of or what we need to. And I would assume even the city's end of it, they've got a, maybe a Plan A and a Plan B, one where they'd love to have us, but that they can't wait, as the mayor said, to go forward. And I know that's hard for everybody, but it's one of those things. And, and some of the questions I would expect you'll, will be much like the same we asked of Tony, when it was, you know, how much do we use the lab? Do we need the lab? We have to look at that cost versus benefit for what we're asking taxpayers to pay as well. So when we are shipping those things out and having to do the wrap and the staffing, what does that cost us as a county versus, you know, using a lab and having that here in that saving? So those are arguments that we have to make to the taxpayers. So just the sign of some of the questions that'll be coming, the things that we need to do, that cost versus benefit analysis type thing to help us.
Yeah, and Quentin Hart again, and, and so, so we did do an audit several years ago to take a look at what buildings need to be done. I think though, one of the things that we're realizing is talking to residents, talking to different people, because we have a lot of, a lot of priorities, but public safety just in and of itself has risen to the top in my conversations with people in the community. We have, you know, the expediency of those that have to do the work that we're talking about consolidating, but just overall public safety, people have a little bit more of a capacity to want to support. We're talking about the sheriff operations, we're talking about police operations, we're talking about the efficiency, we're talking about solving cases, we're talking about giving, getting criminals off the street, we're talking about a safe community. And so, yeah, you guys have a ton of different projects to work on it. And I would say I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, I'm kind of in your shoes a little bit. But when we're talking about public safety for us, it has risen to the top. And that's why we're trying to move forward with this project because we need to make sure we get these streets secure and we need to make sure that our processes and our partnerships are in line to be able to make it safe of a community as possible. And I think taxpayers, hopefully, for the most part, would agree. But not to pit one department over the other, but that's the perspective that we're addressing. And if you say that, yeah, we, we want to partner, there's no way we're going to move forward without you. So we can wait for that, but we just, we just want to know because we, we do have to move forward at some point, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate your comments too. But you're right, public safety, we know how important it is and the critical need. But I know the evidence intake took a little different position with us previously because of the safety being very important. But the, you know, evidence intake of the lab work and evaluating projects kind of after the scene, those can be very important to some families that needed that information to go forward with court cases and that type of thing. But, but I don't know how, since we've closed down our lab, Nate, how many cases have we come across that we've needed to, you know, actually ship those, those?
I'd have to look that stuff up. I don't know that I've stopped my head, Linda, so I'd have to look into that.
Okay, that's all right, it's fair enough.
Sorry, if we were to schedule a work session on this and, and, and with the intent to make a decision. Chief Duncan, if, if we were looking at three weeks to four weeks out, is that, if you had some maybe temperature check of at least openness from the board to move forward on planning, does that, three to four weeks, is that a, is it throwing your guys' plans too much?
Wait for my account.
I see an advocate is over there moving.
I'll be gone at end of April for about three weeks.
Twenty second or twenty third, twenty fourth?
Is it, work session usually done on Tuesdays?
Yep. Twenty second?
Let's do this.
Yeah, we can make that work.
So the twenty second, now, does that give members of the board enough time to get some questions sent over to Nate and interested parties and hopefully get some, some answers so that can be a productive conversation? We can, uh, get to a decision?
Michelle, is that enough time for you to look into the bonding questions?
I would hope so.
Okay.
We'll do our best.
I think also any, even drafts or example, twenty eightys would make sense to get over to my. even drafts or example, twenty eighties would make sense to get over to Mike for review. Um, just as some examples, so we can keep the ball rolling here. Sounds like that's sounds like that's one of the concerns that I'm that I'm I'm hearing.
We might be able to come up with s- something what what it would look like. Um, the the architect, uh, I was kinda hoping to get something for you all today, but um the agreement got uh approved on Monday, and then I think he went to out of town or out of state, so uh he's not back to only a week. So we'll we'll look for something to to at least give you guys, like a what other people have done.
Yeah. All right. So we'll bring us back April twenty second for a final decision, I hope, um.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine A, uh, discussion possible more action for the opioid settlement funds.
Morning, Board, Caitlin, I'm with Black Hat County Public Health. Um, the last time we were talking about opioid settlement funds for our work session, it was August of twenty twenty four. So um, we're here today to kind of bring some updates from the subcommittee that's formed. Um, I do wanna say uh that some of the information that we're gonna be covering in the slides here is repeat information from the meeting in August. But we have a couple of ears that haven't heard that before, um, so some of it will be um previously shared in addition to the update uh from the settlement funds committee. Um, I do want to uh make sure I point out before I get too far talking that Vicki Miller from Pathways is here. Um, Pathways holds most of the contracts for substance use across the spectrum here in Black Hat County. Um, so, you know, while we know that opioid crisis is a public health crisis, um, I rely heavily on Vicki and the rest of the Pathways team to um be the experts in the field and kind of share what they know about evidence-based practices and things that work and and all kinds of things. So thank you to Vicki for being here today. To correct me if I make a mistake, um, uh, but we also used um data from Pathways from the needs assessments that that they do. That's included in the update as well. Okay, so this is something that um hopefully the board has seen before. I won't spend a a lot of time going through the the allowable uses for opioid remediation, um, but I will touch on on just a couple. The um, if I think there aren't any on this page that I wanted that I wanna touch on, um, cause I haven't made any changes to those. Um, but six through twelve here, there's a couple of couple of adjustments. Um, so for number six, uh, early intervention, this includes prevention work such as K through twelve program programs. Um, uh, Pathways is doing a lot of work in this area, um, some is supported by grants. Um, current currently, the grants are being provided by HHS. Um, and as you all know, that there's behavioral health realignment actively occurring, um, through our behavioral system at the state and local levels. So kind of uh just a note about um early intervention and and as it relates to opioid remediate remediation uses. Um, Pathways, uh, Vicki and team shared with me that because they have previously held these grants, they will have the first rate of refusal. Um, but the contracts will be offered by the state administrative service organizations or those ASOs that you might have heard about. Um, so there's, to kind of summarize, there's quite a bit unknown um happening with um early intervention right now just because of the realignment that's occurring at the state level. So I wanted to point that out as an update from um last time. I think that's the only one.
Because of what only change on the slide, the only change, I just wanna point out that number nine, you can't do it in state of Iowa. I just wanna make sure I got.
Oh, yeah, yeah, syringe services. Yeah, syringe services programs um is is not allowed by a, be allowed in the state of Iowa, yep. Okay, this is a new one that we didn't talk about last time. So the core strategies are outlined in the exhibit E, the list of opioid remediation uses uses. Um, Schedule A, they call core strategies, um, they are states and qualifying grantees, so us. Um, we can choose a among abatement strategies that are listed in the entire, you know, the entire two slides that I just um presented. But priority, um, they do want priority to be given to the core abatement strategies or the core strategies that are listed here on this slide. Um, so among these nine categories, there are twenty six activities that are listed in Schedule A. Um, and they include prevention, treatment, recovery, and other strategies such as supporting first responders, leadership, planning and coordination, training, and research. Um, and the core strategies were kind of what was used as a starting point from the subcommittee in terms of looking at um activities for uh Black Hat County. Um, couple of slides that are repeats from last time. Um, previously in Au- in August, um, Ty Burkhart, our deputy director, was here, and she talked about Buchanan County approach. The reason we highlighted Buchanan County is because um Ty worked um with a a local coalition and had experience in kind of what they did and what worked well for them. Um, obviously, there are a community with different dynamics, so it's just, these are just examples of what works in other communities. Also, um, shared some information from Maricopa County, um, because I had just come back from the National Association of County and City Health Officials Conference. And um there is a lot of activity happening um in the public health, national public health community about how communities are using opioid settlement funds. And Maricopa County did some really interesting um things, um, the things that I thought were pretty useful were the one-page best practices for the key focus areas, so if that's something that the board would like to look at again um and kind of look at what they did research for with evidence-based strategies in terms of um e- effort and cost, um, then we can sh- share that back, uh, but it's not a focus of what I wanted to share today. Um, this is new, a community needs assessment. So as I mentioned, um, our data has been obtained um from the Black Hat County Community Assessment State Opioid Response Workbook, which has been prepared by Catholic's Behavioral Services Services, um, and Iowa Health and Human Services Unintentional Drug Overdose Death Report. So um, I just wanna highlight some of the data that we have that applies to Black Hat County. What I will say is, um, and and Vicki, you might echo me, or you might disagree with me, I'm not sure. Um, is that I wish there was more data available on how exactly um the opioid crisis is affecting Black Hat County. There's data is available, it may not be as robust in all the areas that we want it to be. So um what we have to share is kind of what we have available as a community. Do you add anything to that?
It's, yeah, it's it's just not available.
Yep, um, so.
Is it, sorry, is that unique to Black Hat or is it statewide?
It's statewide. Yep, um, so just touching on some data related to prescribing, um, the the rate of prescribing opioids is decreasing over time. You can see that bar um chart on the left-hand side there, that the um numbers are going down in terms of patients re- receiving opioid prescriptions per ten thousand people, that is the state of Iowa. Um, but Black Hat County has a higher rate of opioid prescriptions filled compared to the state rate. Um, so in in uh Black Hat County, it's fifteen per hundred thousand population compared to fourteen point three per hundred pop- hundred thousand population for the state of Iowa. Um, rate of patients that are receiving opioid prescriptions is higher among females compared to male males. And as age increases, rate of opioid prescriptions increases.
Do you have the the gender breakdown, the male versus female?
Um, I don't think I have it on the slide, but I do have it in the data that's available, so I can share that with you if you want. And then in terms of prescription abuse, um, the there's a, here's just a couple of slides that kind of link to an urban rural comparison. So on the left here, the rural population is that orange, and urban populations are uh the red um bar graph. So the question is, the past thirty days, how many days have you used prescription medications that were not prescribed uh for you by your doctor? Um, and then on the right-hand side, that is adult past your opioid, uh, past your prescription op- opioid abuse by age groups, excuse me. So that blue bar is eighteen to thirty-five ages, and the orange bar is uh age of thirty-six or above. Um, in Black Hat County, our rate of opioid-related and methamphetamine, methamphetamine-related treatment admissions are greater than the state rate. Um, and the, what I'm reading is just summarizing what's on these tables, because there's a lot of stuff on these tables. Um, Black Hat County's rate of opioid-related and amphetamine-related emergency department visits are less than the state rate. And Black Hat County's rate of opioid-related hospitalizations is less than the state rate. However, am- amphetamine-related poisoning hospitalizations is slightly greater than the state rate. And so on these charts, um, the greater rate is highlighted in red text, it might be hard to see kind of where you're at. Um, but to kind of visualize if Black Hat County rate is higher or Iowa rate's higher, that's how I signify it. When it comes to drug overdose, drug overdose deaths, uh, Black Hat County's death rate is lower than the state of Iowa compared to um lower than the state of Iowa rate of eleven point seven three per hundred thousand in the same time period. Um, the state of Iowa rate accounts for one thousand four hundred and eighty-six deaths recorded over four years. And then in in terms of drug overdose deaths by drug type, um, this chart shows the percentage of overdose death, overdose deaths from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three that involves common common drugs or drug types. Um, so you can see here in Black Hat County, um, the IMF is illegally made vethanols, that's what IMF stands for. Opioids and IMF um are the, have the highest percentage of drug overdose deaths for drug type. And then in terms of the circumstances of drug overdose deaths, um, this is Black Hat County-specific data, this slide and the last slide were. Um, this graph shows percentages of overdose deaths that are categorized by key circumstances relevant to unintentional drug deaths in Black Hat County. So these percentage percentages are not mutually exclusive, and so they don't equal a hundred percent, cause there may be more than one circumstance per um, uh, a situation that um results in a decedent. Um, so the star on those homelessness and current treatment for substance use disorder means that the count is less than six, and it's been suppressed. Um, so circumstances data provides insight into specific contexts and situations surrounding events like overdose deaths. Um, it highlights opportunities for intervention by identifying patterns and key factors which could be addressed. Um, limitations definitely do exist with circumstance data, as the percentages are only among decedents with sufficient information on those circumstances surrounding the death, um, and with not missing information. So if information is missing, then that wouldn't have been recorded. Okay, so that's kind of um in terms of the data that we're seeing for Black Hat County um as it relates to all the way from prescribing to morbidity, mortality, um, um, kind of across the spec- across the spectrum. I'm gonna give a short update on current opioid-funded pro- programs here in Black Hat County. So again, this will be a little bit of repeat information from last time, if you were part of that um session before. So the county substance abuse project is one that's um supported by the board of supervisors. Um, so uh Pathways Behavioral Services implements this, they provide the Too Good For Drugs program to three hundred youth in Black Hat County. Um, and screening brief intervention and referral to treatment to five hundred young adults. Um, the match comes from opioid settlement funds and the six thousand three hundred and one dollars from Iowa HHS um funnels through the county to Pathways. The project period ends for this in June of twenty twenty-five. This is one of the projects where the state of Iowa has informed us that this will not continue um past uh June twenty twenty-five due to realignment. So it will be up to the administrative service organizations to decide how, if and how they want to implement the county substance use project. Um, overdose data action in states is um a, is a uh project that public health agencies in Iowa, um, a select few of them were invited to participate in this service agreement with Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. So uh Black Hat County Public Health does hold this contract. We received a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to implement specific, um, very prescribed opioid reduction activities. So that includes um clinician and health system engagement and education, training, and collaboration um through academic detailing, public safety partnerships and interventions, harm reduction and stigma reduction, and community-based linkage to care. Uh, we do subcontract with Path- Pathways for the community-based linkage to care piece. Um, and there are specific populations of focus in this grant based on state-level de- state-level data and um prior to populations that Iowa HHS has um set and then invited counties to participate in based on demographics of the counties. Um, this is a um project period that ends in August twenty twenty-eight. The next one, um, the First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Project, we sometimes refer to it as FR CARP. This is another um funding source that comes to Black Hat County Public Health through our six-year response grant. Um, it really, it, in my opinion, doesn't align best with the six-year response grant. It's more of a um substance uh use prevention project. Um, but nevertheless, it comes through our six-year response grant, so it's another one that we subcontract with Pathways Behavioral um Services for. It includes training and distribution of naloxone for um emergency medical services per personnel. And this one is on a federal display year, it's starting September of twenty twenty-five. The next couple ones I'm gonna talk about are actual contracts that go through Pathways, so um Vicki, you can talk about them, or I can talk about them, and you can add anything I just, I, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so these are the state opioid response grant, uh, we held that grant, it's about a little over four hundred thousand dollars. We're six counties in Iowa, uh, we implement evidence-based training, we do some prevention work with that, we're in the schools with that. We have to do a needs assessment um every couple of years and update it yearly. There's media campaigns, um, we also do naloxone distribution. We offer medication-assisted treatment for those who can't fund it through their insurance, so we pay for their medication-assisted treatment services. And we also pay out of this, which is our largest expense, uh, first month's rent for those who have opioid or methamphetamine um issues and need help with their first month's rent to get back on their feet, even for their, for gas cards, so they can get to treatment, transportation. We also offer them wellness, we help them find clothing and things like that in case they need, um, you know, clothing to interview for jobs. We have the job, we job coach for qualifying clients. Medication-assisted treat, I already said that, medication-assisted treatment.
Same as playing.
Yes, yes, okay, how do I make it go? Okay. Um, and then we also have the, we get some of the opioid settlement funds for our uh jail-based services that we're offering. And we serve close to a little over three hundred people a year in the jail for Black Hat County, we do treatment services right there. But we also do the case management, so after they're, when they're getting ready to leave, we make sure they're connected to the community and have all they need for treatment, but a, but as well, as well as some other case management, housing, et cetera, to make sure.
Thank you. Yep, um, and then, as you're probably aware, the other opioid settlement funded contracts, in addition to um the two that involve Pathways, um, is the One City United, um, which is contracted for a hundred twenty-five thousand per year for two years. Um, the, I think the report, it, right, Michelle, is that the funds have been fully spent as of January of twenty twenty-five. Do you want me to flip for you, or do you have any updates?
Yeah. I I thought we did try to update these a little bit.
I I thought we did try to update these a little bit. This slide is the same as you saw in August. So at the end of June of twenty-four, we had just over a million dollars actually in the bank. This is this funding is all coming to us from legal settlements for court cases. So some of the entities are paying overtime. It could be as long as seventeen years. Some are prepaying. It's it's a pretty interesting process to figure out who's paying what and how long it's going to be. So you can go ahead to the next one. So I I tried to project what's going to be there by the end of this June. These are educated guesses, but they are guesses. We will probably still have about one point two million this year. The rate of revenue being distributed us has really slowed. So what I don't know is if there are other large lawsuits out there that could be settled sometime. The system just doesn't really notify you about that till action is happening. So I expect that we'll have about a little bit of an increase in cash by the end of this June. Go ahead to the next one. Over the next number of years, I'm expecting our total future payments to be nearly four million. And if we continue just the two contracts we've been doing, which is the one of Pathways for jail-based service, and then if we would re-award or re-up One City United for their wraparound employment services, that has been running about a quarter million a year for those two. So you can see we those two would be pretty well covered at least through twenty thirty-four based on what I expect we will receive over that time. And that's I think that's all I had in my update. Yep.
Um, so moving on to the Action Plan Side Committee that's been kind of convening since I think probably September. Just kind of a background about a background on what's happened since the last time we spoke to you. So there was a subcommittee formed of the Cedar Valley Substance Abuse and and overdose overdose prevention coalition. This was a coalition that already existed that we're already meeting to talk about substance use and overdose prevention coalition. So they let they let us subcommittee as part of that group to kind of talk about opioid settlement funds and to discuss strategies that could be presented to you as the Board of Supervisors as something to consider. So there were monthly meetings that were held between October of twenty twenty-five and February of twenty twenty-five. There was about twenty people per meeting from the county that included county staff, healthcare, first responders, public safety, community members. The the CVSA and OP, that's a really long name, is actually facilitated by a Pathway staff member. So of course, Pathway staff member and other nonprofit organizations were part of that committee as well. The committee took the twenty-six abstinence strategies that were outlined in that Schedule A of the core strategies and tried to prioritize and narrow to provide some focus for strategies to focus on. And so initially narrowed that down to eleven strategies. This was accomplished through a poll in January that was open for two weeks to kind of oh, I'm sorry, and then was further selected narrowed down to five strategies that was selected through the committee poll in January. But first, the the committee did a gap analysis. So the members that were part of the subcommittee looked at the top eleven. So they kind of took the twenty-six, narrowed it down to eleven, and then went through those eleven strategies and said, what do we already have in our community that could be leveraged with opioid settlement funds? Or what what's something new that we could add to our community with opioid settlement funds as it relates to these top eleven strategies? So through this gap analysis, they identified some threats and also some areas where there was quite a bit of discussion and and focus. So the threats that were identified include grant-funded programs. So like we talked a little bit, there's there's a little bit of unpredictability because of the behavioral health service alignment that's happening right now. But kind of in general, grant-funded programs also bring their own level of unpredictability. So the predictability for sustainability for those programs, it only goes as far out as the contract period. So that was something that the group identified as important to note. So even if we have, you know, programs that are currently happening here in the county, like the ones that we've talked about, we want to make sure that we look at the sustainability of those and kind of ensure that they're supported if something in the system changes or if the grant funds change or something like that. Legislation is also a threat currently to our opioid system in terms of Medicaid reimbursement primarily because there's a blending of funds of many different sources. Some of them might be grant funds, but others are definitely Medicaid reimbursement. So whatever happens with Medicaid reimbursement definitely does impact the capacity of local organizations to be able to continue services. And then we and then I already talked a little bit about the behavioral health service alignment and the threat that that brings, given that the administrative service organizations have discretion on which programs they would choose to support or not support, such as that county Substance Abuse Grant. Other topics that were outlined in the gap analysis to consider included Medicaid-assisted treatment for persons transitioning and within the criminal justice system, screening brief intervention and referral to treatment. There was quite a bit of support for both in clinical settings to expand services maybe to non-Medicaid-eligible or uninsured pregnant women and in community settings in terms of funding for evidence-based program programming in schools. Recovery services, the group noted they'd like to consider broadening scope of recovery to include co-occurring substance use disorders or mental health conditions. And then a bit of discussion on how media campaigns have the potential to increase awareness of current programs and I think my text got cut off. But kind of bring leverage programs that are currently existing in the community. So that could a media campaign could impact multiple items on that list of twenty-six that was then narrowed down to eleven. Okay, so then what happened after that is there was a community poll to kind of see if we could further narrow down priorities of those eleven down to five. So a community poll was launched, I believe, in January. So the pie graph on the left here says, do you work for an agency that comes into contact with individuals who use opioids or have a history of opioid use disorders? So that green slice of the pie is yes, I do. And that blue slice of the pie, the approximately three-quarters, says no, I'm a community member. We did limit the number of responses from organizations. So it was one response per agency. So what I will point out is that these poll results are not necessarily representative of our population. It is it should be considered a sample of community members' responses. And just to kind of put that caveat with the community poll. And then as a follow-up for the community members that said, yes, I'm a community member, there was a question that said, do you or loved one have experience with opioid misuse or addiction? And twenty respondents said, yes, I have experienced that. And thirteen said, no. So there's a pretty high proportion of people responding to the poll that have been positively impacted or I guess greatly impacted, not positively impacted, but greatly impacted by opioid misuse or addiction. Anyone completing the community poll was asked to look at the needs assessment report, which included the data that I just shared previously that was prepared by Pathways. It was sent with a prioritization survey. Participants were encouraged to review it prior to the completing the survey. However, we didn't we don't have a way of verifying that they actually did do that. Okay, so the results are broken down by kind of across the spectrum of prevention, treatment and recovery. And so the the activities are listed here on the left-hand side. Those are the ones that they had opportunity to choose from, to prioritize. So kind of an insight from this results that both groups support treatment and recovery for opioid use disorder, substance use disorder, mental health. Agencies prioritize frontline response and overdose intervention and community members prioritize long-term recovery and stability. And then from the poll, if the timeline were a two-year timeline, and this was discussed due to the potential threats and uncertainty with funding to really look at, okay, from a short-term perspective, what what could we focus on? There were five strategies that were prioritized within that within that two-year fine in the two-year timeline. There were one in each of prevention and treatment and three related to recovery. So we decided to stop at that point as a subcommittee because we did able to accomplish the goal of kind of narrowing down from a from a community member and and organization perspective, some strategies that the board could consider for supporting with opioid settlement funds in the next two years. But I wanted to take this time now to have some discussion with the board about what continued support the board would like from this subcommittee, if any. So a couple of options would be that there could be if you if it was something like the board wanted to pursue a funding opportunity structure, members of
I would say
Members of that subcommittee that would not be seeking funding, for example, could assist with drafting requests for quotes or application or proposal, whatever that would look like, could put together a list of evaluation recommendations. So kind of how you would evaluate the impact of those funds on the community. Those would be things that the a subset of the subcommittee could do. The subcommittee could also compile a list of agencies who can implement strategies. This would require additional work because that wasn't necessarily part of the gap analysis that we did, but could do something like that. So really, it's kind of a question to the board now of what additional information or needs do you have from either this committee or specific organizations on the committee of how to move forward with the opioid settlement funds?
Okay, I'm wondering, maybe Vicky can speak to this. How do we evaluate the success of what's going on so far?
That's a great question. So that's kind of what that evaluation recommendations will point is all about. So things that you could look at, oh. Things that you could look at would be like what how many people you're reaching, what their outcomes are. I'll let you talk about some of the things that you already reported.
Right, like for our prevention programming, we do pre-and post-testing, we do evaluation in the schools. It shows how many kids are growing in knowledge from our programs. From our treatment programs, we talk about recidivism recidivism rate. We look at that all the time. And I've reported some of those things to Michelle already when we had to report. We looked at how many numbers we served, how many people we've helped get into job placements, things like that. We can nail down a set of things if there's something more specific you guys were looking at. We have an HR. We each client that we work with has an individualized goal and we we mark them as successfully completing treatment if they reach the goals they intended to reach within their own personal plan.
And I I apologize because I'm going to come off like a super stenik here.
Okay.
But just understand the world that I come from, we don't see success stories.
Of course.
So I I at least know that much that I I believe they exist. I just don't ever get to see them. And so I always find myself wondering why is it the same group of people are wandering around like zombies in the city?
And let me tell you that we've got about a third of the people that come through ask for any kind of treatment services will be successful the first time. Another two another third, it'll take a it'll take more than one time, maybe four times before they're successful because this is an addiction. It's really hard. And about a third, no matter what we do, are not going to a hundred percent be okay. So so we expect there's and that's we're better that we're higher as we've looked at it, the national averages. But that's that's where we're at with treatment services.
Well, two-thirds is pretty damn good.
And 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 some of that that one-third, I like I said, will take more than once because we've got many of that come back two or three times and finally something clicks with them and then they are successful. Or at least they're not getting arrested anymore. They're staying on the streets. They have a stable job. They may have reduced their use, which is good.
Yeah.
And I I'll just say that's kind of another plug for working across the spectrum because the more we can prevent, then the less, you know, that has to be treated. So.
Yep.
So is success stories more because of size of the community? We are being kind of in between big or small. Do you think we get a little more attention because of size of the community do we?
There's more funding available right now, at least with the state. I'm not sure what that's going to look like moving forward. But yes, there's more funding available than, for example, than we get to like sort of people in Butler County, for example.
Do you see access to stable housing as one of the biggest determinations of whether someone's successful or not?
It's a big part. And right now, those who have had problems with addiction, sometimes have burned so many bridges that they have no place else to go. And if we could have more stable housing, that would be great.
What was the county's support for this work prior to the opioid funds? Did the county support financially? Does anyone know?
In the settlement funds or?
Yeah.
Not from the board's perspective, other than this little teeny tiny piece of we might provide trans we might pay for transportation that the sheriff provides to a hospital, that like a hundred bucks. That that is all that the county has done.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that we weren't just sort of taking dollars that we would have that we used to spend and now using the opioid. These are new uses of the dollars.
No, this has been a wonderful opportunity that we're able to do things that now Pathways did have a state grant.
We did.
And I don't know for how long.
It was actually a grant that the county had through the sheriff's department.
Yep.
And then that grant ended and then the opioid funding was be able so we could still stay in the jails.
Right, so that so that portion, that that ninety-three thousand dollar contract with Pathways had been occurring before, but it was funded externally from the county. And I don't know for how long.
Yep. Um. It was three years, I think, wasn't it? Do you remember?
I don't remember.
Okay, yeah, I didn't I didn't know if there was something prior to that. I do think there was about three years before.
There was not, yeah.
Then the One City United piece of it, that truly was brand new that I don't think that we had funded any of that before.
Other questions or I guess?
Can we go back to the previous slide?
Yep. So this one is, I guess there's what I would say is I would probably look at both the eleven and kind of this one as well as this one. Because how we got from the eleven to the five was that community poll. And we know that the community poll was had pretty heavy representation of individuals that were interested in recovery because they themselves would benefit from recovery services. So I think it's important to probably look at both of them.
Can I also note that
Sure.
this poll was done before a lot of the state information came out that funding may be not as stable as it used to be for some substance abuse prevention and treatment programming.
That that I was going to ask about that. So I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah.
Do we know what the state is using their opioid funding for? Last term, last legislative term, they didn't take any action. So I don't know.
They still haven't come to an agreement on that yet. So we still don't know what they're using their opioid settlement funding for. And the contracts that we usually get for things, they told us we might not see any contracts. So may or should be. So that's where I'm at.
Because when we did look at those strategies and I'm the reason I'm speaking is because I'm kind of outside that circle of all the people that are providing services. And as we looked at the funding that was available at that time, this was back in November through January timeframe before some of this information is new to me today. There was a pretty good chunk of funding for the prevention strategies at that time. So yes, we did feel that when we did that gap analysis that there might be other things that needed addressed that weren't being addressed at all in our community. Where there were, there were grants being provided, it probably also by the state to mostly Pathways, but there was prevention money out there. Now, we don't know today.
Yeah. Right. And if you have questions about the the description or the headers, we do have the Schedule A with the core strategies here. If you have any questions, I can leave those.
Okay.
Caitlin, could you send us the follow-up point?
Yep, absolutely.
So today you're looking for guidance from us on whether the subcommittee should continue?
Really? Yeah, or what what additional needs that you have from the subcommittee? Because essentially kind of what we talked about in August of, you know, looking at the strategies and and what's allowable and, you know, giving some sort of structure around what committee organizations would prioritize based on like a gap analysis and and current programs. Um, that's, we've kind of completed that. And so the the committee can kind of go back to the work that they were doing before or if there's something additional that the board needs, then I think we just need to know that. I didn't I didn't feel comfortable moving forward with doing anything else that we weren't asked to do, so.
I guess, I guess one thing I would find of value would be uh Mickey maybe making another look at the gap analysis after the dust settles a little bit in the State House and we know better what that picture is. And so, yeah, but I think you've all done an excellent job of building this down to five priority areas. For us, that's, I guess that and um, I guess the overall larger committee is already keeping their eyes and ears open for every funding opportunity that there is, so I think that's already being done.
Yeah, I don't know how many there are, right, but yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, so and if you'll remember, one of, excuse me, one of the reasons that we were needing support from a committee was that we do have a pot of money that I think is smaller than what we initially assumed. So we had awarded the two contracts, but just based on an individual proposal. We really, last summer, we did not have a comprehensive plan for how we wanted to apply the settlement funding that we received, which are, we are required to apply to opioid treatment. That's the strategy she was talking about. Those come from the legal settlement agreements that the states and then we kind of participate in in order to get some of that settlement money. So it was to hopefully help us, guide us to create a comprehensive strategy to for the the most impact, right, for the dollars we have. So I will say, just a reminder, we did have it on the slide, the One City contract is fully paid out today. The Pathways contract and the jails is funded through September. But those are two, those are the two things we've funded at this point, but one of them, the contract has expired, so you as a group need to determine how you might want to take steps forward. If we want to continue funding that, if we want to open up an application pool, as Caitlin mentioned on one slide. And it is frustrating because the state, I we got three percent of the opioid money, the state got fifty percent of it and I don't know, they can't seem to decide what they're doing with it. So it would be awfully helpful to know that, but I don't know when we might get to know.
Yeah, and I've heard kind of rumors that it was gonna happen this legislative session, but I haven't seen anything happen, so.
I haven't. And I haven't heard anything that's made it. I believe our our second funnel is April fourth, so you would think we would be hearing about those by now.
Yeah.
Right. Hearing on on other things, uh, many of the budgetary things, might be seeing uh decisions starting to happen next week.
Okay.
Yep.
So maybe.
Yeah, so I mean, kind of the way that it works that I'm, what I'm used to in public health is that there's priorities set by the entity that holds the money and they put out some sort of a opportunity for people to write for. And um, then, you know, that's scored based on a predetermined set of evaluative criteria and awarded based on how closely it aligns with the priorities and the scoring and all of that. And so that's kind of the system and the structure that I'm used to um, that I would feel comfortable saying, I know how to help with that. Um, or there are other people that are part of the subcommittee that could help with that as long as, you know, there wasn't a conflict of interest or something like that.
Exactly, that's what we were hoping.
Yeah.
To your, to your point earlier, a quarter billion dollars a year for the next fifteen is kind of what we're looking at, right? Right now, we're funding two entities. Um, or, you know, those are going towards two entities. Trying to think through how do we get to a point where we're ensuring sort of the diversity of that approach. And to your point, if we're, if our goal is to hit five, if we got five sort of areas that we want to hit.
Well, I think that's a question for you though.
Yeah, and so the other thing, I I guess the other thing is that just because this subcommittee said, you know, these are the five things that um come to the top from the people that were asked, it doesn't mean those are five, the five that you have to say we're gonna commit resources to.
Yeah.
Um, it, you know, there's some information behind it and there that gap analysis and all of that, hopefully is important. But ultimately, the board, you you have the decision to choose whatever you would like to choose in terms of strategies to fund.
You, as the subcommittee, you guys, if you had a preference, I mean, what would, I mean, surely you guys have probably talked about that before, like.
Oh, actually, we didn't talk about the preference of the committee as a whole. Um, just because I think we got to the point where it was like, okay, if there are going to be if it if it's assisting with the funding opportunity structure, well, then there are some people on the committee that would probably apply for some of those funds, right? So then they would have to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna self-select out of this, so I don't jeopardize my eligibility to apply for few funds. And so that's kind of where we got to at the last call. And and so I don't think there's consensus among the subcommittee about next steps.
I would like a little bit of time to con, to digest.
Yep.
Um, I do think it's important for us to set direction, um, and articulate come to as much consensus as possible, I think amongst five of us. Um, of a usually agreed upon approach, um.
The other thing.
Let's have a little bit of time to just absorb.
Yeah, the other thing that's available is the full gap analysis. Um, those are part of the meeting minutes from the December meeting. Um, it is about thirty pages long, but there's, a lot of it is white space, but it is about thirty pages long. Um, so I haven't shared that with the board yet, but if it's something that you would want to take a look at, I can, we can share those minutes with you. That includes that cap analysis. Just with a caveat that it's from December. Um, so any changes that have happened, you know, from December on, we would, those wouldn't be captured unless we would go back and and capture them.
Which I honestly think quite important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you like us to update that gap analysis and share it with the board?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or requests? The other thing I would say is I'm up here talking, but I did not do most of the work for the subcommittee. That goes to other people on the team and other people on the subcommittee, so this was definitely a joint effort by a lot of different people.
Everybody.
Well, thank you, yes, thank you, everybody.
All right. Work session nine B, do we have any discussion for budget?
Just Floyd?
Anything planned? So placeholder.
I don't really create anything out of one exhibit I could share that someone has how our taxes had changed, the actual taxes paid by an entity, how have they paid, changed over the last ten years? Corey, could you flip that magic light on, whatever it is?
Oh, it's your.
Yep, absolutely.
I hope I have this on. I might.
You got it connected?
There she goes. Yeah, the light wasn't green. Okay. So I was, just for conversation purposes, provide this. So the, it's actually pretty favorable, I think, to the, and this is only the county's taxes over the last ten years. You can see for an urban residential home, they've actually decreased since fiscal seventeen. Let's see, rural residential has, that has increased almost seventeen percent. Commercial was ju, zero, I was actually surprised to see how that came out. Industrials falling fifteen percent. Multi-residential, as you know, that's dropped a good third from converting it from, used to be taxed as commercial property, now it's taxed as residential. And then ag properties gone up substantially, more than double. So, and I would say in there, you have to remember, the state did take over the mental health, so that knocked a good dollar or more off our levy. And that's covered in this time period. Our debt service levy declined substantially over that time as well. You had bonds outstanding at the beginning of that time period that I believe were primarily used for roads.
Roads and bridges.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't really have any other comments, so happy to research things or answer questions or whatever you'd like.
I mean, I feel good.
Yeah.
I appreciate Michelle the average too, but I was gonna say I do want to see each of the years over the last ten years.
I have that as well, it's not.
No, I didn't, I didn't need it for today, but I just meant, yeah, thank you.
For each type of property too, it's it's a lot of numbers, but I can provide it.
I'll take a look at it and tell, we'll get back to you, thank you.
Okay.
I think to, um, like last week, I talked briefly about, just wanted to see what the what our portion of uh the increase, that's okay.
I'm sorry. I did work on that.
Okay.
Um, it's gonna be all over the place for each of the cities.
For sure. I I don't necessarily even need it in the media, I think if if we can get it, just so that when we're out having a conversation with folks and they say,
Okay.
I live in Cedar Falls, or I live here, I live there, we can have specific data that versus.
There's a number of tax entities, probably thirty, so.
Oh, I'll need a cheat sheet.
It was, it's building all the data to support that cheat sheet, that's the question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it, because the school districts don't just fall within the city boundaries, there's a lot of
Yeah. Yeah.
So I, I start, I have one for City Waterloo, Waterloo schools.
Sure.
Um, I've started one for Cedar Falls, Cedar Falls schools. And then do you want just a residential or are you wanting it for all five property types? There's just a lot of data, I'm, we can put it together.
I'm mostly concerned just with residential.
Yes, rather overwhelmed. Pardon me?
I'm mostly interested in the residential.
Okay.
Because for most of the outcry comes from, does it?
Yeah.
Well, I think we better be prepared for people asking for rural or into.
Right, well, yeah, but rural residential, yeah, that's it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, yeah. I'd I'd love to have a commercial and industrial, but I I, right, I get it.
I mean.
I think the bulk of the conversation is.
I just didn't want to throw uh ten thousand numbers at you and I don't know what is this.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, appreciate that. I think, yeah, residential would probably be enough to, for the use of conversation with folks, right?
I mean.
Yeah. The business owners could understand that.
Yeah, I I I didn't give at all to you, it's just, like I said, it's a lot to wait through, basically.
Yeah.
Um, Tim, do you have any?
Well.
Because he's kind of takes care of somebody.
On on the mailings that went out, at the top of the second page is a breakdown of where the tax dollars that are collected in that tax district are going.
Yeah.
So if you lived in City Waterloo, Cedar Falls schools, you could see on there what percentage of your tax dollars are going to each of those entities. It's not broken out by class of property, that's just total dollars collected in that district. So everyone who got one of those mailings, which is hopefully everyone who pays taxes can see that breakdown for themselves.
Yeah. Correct, but in the conversation, in the conversation with them, they may not have memorized that table.
Well, they go, they go understanding how it impacts them, those are the calls that I'm getting, you know?
I think that's the. Yeah.
Yeah, I see all these numbers, I don't know what it means to the checkbook, basically.
Correct.
So I think that's what you're asking for, is how it affects you with the checkbook.
Yeah, and and to be able to say that, you know, our increase represents X percent of their increase, right?
And because.
Right, and the frustrating thing about this is because of the estimate of the ten percent increase in the assessed value, this would be very simple in that use the actual, but it doesn't, it's too high. So I think that's probably why you want actual numbers instead.
And I think be able to use um the hundred thousand mark is helpful just because it's an easy multiplier.
Um, I I am glad to do that for a one-year snapshot. It it's like to build this ten-year one though, to really reflect it, I had to go back and put in all those revaluations because otherwise it's pretty meaningless, really.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And even with the revaluation, doesn't mean your particular property will ever down that much, but at least it gives some idea.
Right.
So yeah, I could switch it back to just a plot, well, a hundred thousand for residential, I've been using five hundred for commercial
Yeah.
and a million for industrial. And the the five hundred commercial might be high for some of the small towns, I don't know.
And that one's a little different than if you use a hundred thousand dollar house. Residential, yes, there's a multiplier, you could double it if you have a two hundred thousand dollar house. But with commercial with the two-tiered rollback on those, it really doesn't, you know, a five hundred thousand dollar business, you can't say a million is twice that
Yeah.
because it uh it skews a little bit that way, or so it does kind of matter what you pick for a commercial if you're.
But I think if we just prioritize for the sake of being able to get through that that math, if we just prioritize residential, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Very good. Any other reports or information from the board?
I've had a, first, um, RTA meeting this last week, um, a couple new vehicle purchases that definitely seemed to make sense, even the wear and tear and repair costs, they were facing, but that's the two major else.
Linda and I were able to finally get a facilities meeting together with Rory and Carolyn. Wasn't to rely on, I think, but just trying to get a catch up where things were left off. Maybe she worked on it, it was the past couple of years on something like that, so. There's a couple things we're looking at, one, um, just for a what-if, looking at a walk-through at the city hall. And then also looking at some discussions again with the city on Sixth Street parking lot. We did do a walk-through of another building here in downtown. It was a lot rougher than I remembered it, but still continue looking for doing something for the county attorneys. The other thing last week is attended the Northland Regional Transportation Authority with Ryan. And I just have to say, Ryan did a masterful job in helping secure about one point one million for federal dollars for county roads. Was very impressed in how all that worked, it was like a sea of sharks going after a little shotgun throwing out there. But the process works and it's interesting to see all that went.
At this point, uh, entertain a. At this point, uh entertain a resolution uh pursuant to the provision of the Iowa Open Meetings Law by the authority of the Code of Iowa. Twenty-one point uh five one J, the Blackout County Board of Supervisors shall proceed into closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property. And its taped recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination of the transaction discussed as completed.
So moved.
So moved. All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
So moved. Second.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.